the blue bars there represent your general fund balance overall over the last five years. As you can see, it's steadily increasing. Um, the general fund balance is broken down into several categories depending on how the funds can be spent. Um, the most broad category category is called unassigned and basically that money is available for a rainy day fund or anything like that, whatever the village chooses. And at the end of two thousand and fifteen, the general fund, unassigned fund balance was one million, six hundred and sixty seven thousand. That's approximately thirty percent of the annual expenses for the year. Um, that that percentage is typically one of municipalities use to gauge their general fund balance and typically they shoot for twenty to twenty-five percent. So you guys are at thirty, which is a good thing. Um, and on that same bar graph, you can see the red bars are your unassigned fund balance over the last five years. And depending on what you spend, choose to spend some reserves on, that can fluctuate. But as you can see, it's fourteen and fifteen years kind of muddled off there. So I think those are in good positions. Um, the next little section there talks about the general fund budget. And for two thousand and fifteen, you budgeted five million, five hundred and seventy-one thousand of revenue and actually collected five million, six hundred and sixty-eight. So you collected approximately ninety-seven thousand more than you budgeted for. And you budgeted to spend five million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand. You actually spent five million, six hundred and ninety. So you spent approximately seventy-five thousand less than budgeted for. So in the end, you collected more than you budgeted and spent less than you budgeted. And the village does a good job of monitoring this throughout the year and doing any amendments if necessary. And the net position of the village, this is all the fund balances combined into one, it includes water and sewer, um, is a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars. So a lot of that has to do with fixed assets of the water and sewer, but that's a very strong net position. Um, so the takeaway from that is that general fund balance is strong and the net position is strong also. And we'll just give you a heads up that there are a couple of funds that have its fund balance deficit and those are listed in your full financial statements. Um, the next thing I want to talk about is the water and sewer funds. You can see there, I listed the rate of return for the last three years. Rate of return is a number that the PSC uses to kind of gauge, um, if your rates are adequate or not. In two thousand and thirteen, it was six point six-two. In two thousand and fourteen, it dipped to four point seven. And then this year, it's back up to six point six-two. Um, two thousand and fourteen, there was some expenses for some well repair and additional equipment, which was approximately sixty thousand dollars more of expense in two thousand and fourteen. So then in fifteen, that expense wasn't there and our rate of return kind of spiked back up to what we'd like to see. Um, six point six-two is a pretty good rate of return. I think it averages significantly lower than that, around two or three percent. Um, so just from an operations standpoint, I think the rates are probably okay for now. Um, you can see that the simplified, last time you guys did a simplified rate increase was two thousand and eleven. And what that does is it's a pretty simple process and it just increases everything by three percent. And if you qualify for that, you can do that on an annual basis. Um, and then a full rate increase was last done, um, in two thousand and four. And what that does, it's a much more in-depth process. They, they will get all your expenses, all your revenues and kind of your future project costs. And then they, they increase the rates as necessary for that. Um, so if you have any projects coming up, the full rate increases is the, is the way to go. But, um, I'm not sure if you're eligible this year for a three percent increase, but I would encourage you to, to check that out on an annual basis and if necessary, take that step. Um, and then finally, we also, in addition to testing the numbers, we also look at, um, internal controls of the village. So we pick samples of transactions, test them and make sure that the internal controls are operating as designed and we had no internal control issues. Um, and I will just mention the last two graphs are pie charts there and they just show you the revenue and the expenses of the general fund broken down into category. And as you can see in the, the two thousand and fifteen general fund revenue, the majority of your revenue comes from tax and special assessments, seventy-one percent. The next highest is seventeen percent of net intergovernmental, plus your state share revenue and highway, um, grants from the state. And in two thousand and fifteen, general fund expenditures, about forty-six percent of your general fund budget goes to public safety. The next highest would be, um, leisure activities at twenty percent. And I just want to thank Lisa, does a great job for us. She always gives us everything we need right away. And Mike too, for all, all that they do. They make the process easy for us. So if you have any questions or now[667.43]
Was, uh, recommendation from Arbor Systems was we need to cut those down. And, uh, so that's part of our plan. We also identified one hundred and fifty-five trees that were considered in relatively good health. And, um, there are basically two ways you can deal with a tree, um, an ash tree right now. And one of them is to remove the ash tree and thereby you're removing the source for the, for the Emerald Ash Board. Um, or you can treat this, and there are several treatments for this, but on, in general, the treatment is about ten dollars per diameter inch, um, based on your tree, and that's an every-two-year type of, uh, uh, treatment.
Treatment, yeah.
Um, we've calculated approximately to treat all the trees, all the one-hundred-and-fifty-five trees within the village, uh, property, um, approximately twenty-three thousand dollars if we were to treat those, that would be every two years.
Is that including the trees that are ten inches or less?
That includes all the trees. If we are, if we just treat the trees that are ten inches and greater, then it's about nineteen thousand dollars every two years.
Our recommendation when it comes to the tree, how, to trees is anything under ten inches should be, I recommend it should be removed. The cost for that tree, to inject that tree for the lifetime of that tree, the tree from growing from ten inches to, uh, forty inches in diameter, which most ash trees can get up to that size, the cost increases over, over years. And so if you have a tree that's ten inches small, our recommendation is to remove the ten-inch trees, replace with a different species, diversify your species in replacing the tree, and cut your cost at a younger age in the tree, in the size of, you know, early on. And then, you know, you won't have that continuing expense over the years as it'll increase over time.
Right. And so what we were tasked, I think, at an earlier meeting was, you know, we wanted to have this tree form for one, to be able to kind of spread this information to the public, to get any feedback that we can from the public as we start to look at moving forward. And, uh, what I've presented with you in the, the May ninth memorandum, it's just called the Ash Tree Plan and Analysis. It kind of gives you a financial breakdown, um, as well as kind of a logistical breakdown, um, of the health of the trees, as well as kind of the, the costs associated with implement, implementing a type of plan. Um, I do have an exhibit here, um, tonight that just kind of shows, this is taking all of the information, the GPS coordinates from the Emerald Ash Board, or Emerald, the Tree Survey, um, that shows a, uh, just a little green spot wherever there was a tree identified. Um, important things to note, in like Bethel Greenacre Park, we have fourteen ash trees. In J.C. Park, which is, and then we're talking about J.C. Park West, not the East Park, that's owned by the high school now, but J.C. Park West has thirty-eight ash trees, and then Prairie Mount Cemetery has twenty-eight ash trees. So you can see there are a couple, there are a couple groupings in other different parts of the village, maybe a couple developments that really, there was a time period where ash trees were easy to grow, they were, they were, uh, economical.
Yeah, they're inexpensive and very hardy.
Yeah, and so there were a lot of them planted at one time. But it just gives you an idea of what we're looking at when we're talking about whether to save a tree or to not, to save a tree. Um, I actually have a force, a four kind of pronged approach and plan that we have, uh, before the village board tonight for approval. Um, and I just kind of, I'll read through that. Um, I said going forward, it's my recommendation that we take the following approach for our ash tree plan. I said continued removal of hazard trees on the survey list. These are the ones that are marked in the red on the Emerald, on the, uh, Ash Tree Survey. And with plan for complete removal of those trees by the end of twenty-seventeen. We really have to stagger this just because of cost and, and resources. Number two, removal of public works, by public works of all forty-nine healthy trees of ten inches in diameter or less by the end of twenty-seventeen. When they're a certain size, um, and if they're in a, a fairly decent location, we, we as a public works, we can remove those trees. Uh, we can, uh, cut those up, we can transport them. So we really don't have to employ, uh, say, the professional services of, of like, uh, a subcontractor like Arbor Systems to be able to come in and take care of those. Um, identification, number three is identification of larger ash trees which are greater than ten inches diameter, which should be treated and marked for saving. Um, working with consultants and, uh, myself to determine high priority large trees for saving. Our idea here is that if there is a tree that's in a, it's in a nice location, it's a very healthy tree, it's, it's, um, you know, it might be worth that investment of that ten dollars per diameter inch over a period of two years. And of course, we're signing on for then, two years from then, and two years from then. But it really makes sense on some of these trees and in some of these locations, it makes sense to make that investment into that tree. Um, they said we would treat in, it's probably getting a little late for treatment this year?
No, we can, we can treat all the way up into July.
Okay.
We start treatment right after the leaves are mature, and we're getting to that point here within the next week or two. So we'll be starting our treatments here in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, so we possibly treat some in twenty-sixteen, but mostly treat in twenty-seventeen and biannually thereafter. And that would have to become a budget item that we would look at and review every year. And then selective removal over time as necessary of remaining large untreated ash trees currently listed as healthy. In other words, if there is a tree that is listed as healthy, we've determined that we're not going to spend money on treating it. That tree will become infected, that tree will eventually die, and then we'll have to remove that. Um, as Jeff has mentioned, one of our goals is to replace trees. If we're taking trees down, we'd actually like to be trying to replace some trees so we're not left stripped bare here in a few years. Um, but as Jeff has, uh, hit, hit on is we want to be able to create a, a nice diverse population of what we're putting back so that in five years from now, we're not finding that there's a locust disease that kills everything. And we, you know, we planted all locusts this year, we wouldn't want to make that mistake again. Um, but that we would budget that, uh, for future, uh, budgeting periods.
I think my recommendation too, as much as E A B is in Oregon right now, yeah, I would really consider if you're going to spend some money on injection is, is to start injections this year if you can. Um, just in the last couple of months, I just, I, we do a lot of work all throughout Oregon, and it's popping up everywhere. So it's been here for two or three years. Um, some cases are really bad, so that's telling me that tree's been being fed on for a little, a minimum of two years, if not three. So if there is some kind of a, you know, greater or budget item that can be budgeted and pushed forward, you do think of, uh, doing, saving some of these trees, it'd be a good idea to.
Yeah, one, one of the items, um, that we'll be looking at for borrowing for this year is actually a line item there, um, I believe, fifty, fifty thousand dollars that we've added for borrowing for this year. That would be, that would go towards treatment and selective removal of trees and replacement. Um, so that's something that we want to, we realize that we're kind of have to catch up a little bit, and that's probably what we, what we need to be doing this year. Um, a common question that we always get is, okay, we're, we're cutting down all these trees, and what do you do with the wood? Um, I know, uh, Jeff, you had, you had asked a little while ago, um, kind of, is there value in this? Is there value in the wood that we're taking down? I did some research, and there's another memo that you saw in that called, uh, Urban Wood Use and Value. Based on some meeting, a meeting with, uh, Paul Morrison, the owner of the Wood Cycle out in the town of Oregon, as well as some discussion with other individuals, and, um, yes, there is some, some value, but not as much as you would think. Other communities have tried to, um, cut these, cut these trees up into usable lengths and then have, uh, people bid on them in an auction base. I believe there was one community, I think it was Lake Mills, that had ten or eleven auction piles, and they ended up netting about thirteen hundred dollars after all, all was said and done, it really didn't amount to much at all. What we've historically done is, uh, Gary Dish will maintain a list of those who are interested in getting wood. Um, and when we have that, he just kind of goes down his list, and, and if the person is still willing to take it, allows it to be used. I mean, ash trees, um, can be used for flooring, can be used for furniture, more often it's used for firewood. Um, would you agree?
Yeah, across the board, I think there's a, there's a big, um, how do I say it, urban wood utilization right now. It's a really popular thing, and ashes, the amount of ash that's out there, the market flooded with ash. Um, there's, it, there is some value, but it's, it's really to the end user who, how much value you're going to get out of it. There's not, there's not, generally, um, the ash that we've milled in the past, it's okay wood, and it can stain to any color. If you, but you still have to process it, you still have to remove it, haul it to site, mill it, dry it, plane it, get it to a finished product, so the cost of it. And with this small amount that the village has, is two-hundred trees, and the, the larger ones that are hazardous trees are decayed and failing, there's no hardwood left in them, they're just, they're falling apart. So there's not a whole lot of value in the trees that are standing that have to be removed. And that's where the end user comes, as far as the guys that have the wood burners, um, that heat with wood. Um, and so that's, that's where it kind of breaks down to chips. The chips can be valued, uh, you, your chipper, our chipper would chips it up small enough into a small enough chip that the boar will die. So if you do use the chips and give the chips back out to the public, I'm not sure if you guys do that, do you?
Yes.
Yeah, but chip pile so that the, the boar will die in that chip pile because that chip pile's going to get hot enough where it's not going to survive. So that's another, uh, way to utilize some of the wood.
Right, and that's all staying locally, so it's not like we are transporting, transporting it outside of the county or anything like that. It's really within a few mile radius of, of, uh, the village. Um, and we do, and we do the chips that we have made, and that is an option to, to chip it up. I think Madison, City of Madison actually chips a hundred percent of their trees right now regardless of size or value or whatever.
Yeah, they have a tub grinder, they call it Big Blue, where that can take out, you know, it can chip up forty, sixty-inch chunks of wood. I think you guys done that in the past, but, but not that big.
Right.
You know, they brought in a tub grinder a couple of times.
We do annually bring up one of those in over to the brush pile and everything, so, um. So when all said and done, that's kind of, that's what we've been able to determine as a plan. We think this is a good plan moving forward. Uh, we look forward to hopefully support and comment on that. Um, we welcome comments from the, from the public if they, I know there was talking to some individuals here before, um, the meeting tonight. But, uh, I think that's where we're at, I think we are looking towards the future and, and as, as we clean up, as we take some of these trees out of the parks, trying to figure out if they're in the best location, and that might provide opportunity as fields maybe get reconfigured because there was a tree in there now, needs to be taken out. Maybe we can reconfigure that a little better for the future and everything. So I like to look at things as an opportunity, but, uh, this is kind of where we would like to head from here.
Thank you, Jeff.
And Jeff, um, before we have any further discussion on this, I'd like to, uh, entertain a motion to approve the Public Works Director's Ash Tree Plan as presented, and, uh, move forward with that.
So, so I'm going to make a motion for discussion only because you asked for it?
Mm-hmm. I'll suck at that. Got a motion and a second.
Are we sure that nobody in the audience is here to, to talk about this before we approve a motion? No?
Or are there, are there questions?
Nope, you answered a little bit for me.
Yeah, I mean, we're, this is the point where we can ask, anybody can ask questions now.
Would the hazard tree removal and taking place this year come out of the two thousand and sixteen budget plan?
It's, it's coming out of our current budget, and it would come out of probably a portion of that, uh, additional borrowing that we're requesting would come out of that as well. We, we have allocated funds every year that, you know, but it's not a significant amount, it's usually five to ten thousand dollars in different areas for, for tree removal, and, uh, that has, I mean, we've, we're pretty much at that. We've taken a couple of trees down at the cemetery that were hazard trees, um, as well as some on South Main and over on Dewey Street.
And that's actually a nice segue into the conversation about Tree City USA.
Yes.
Which, which, maybe you want to call the motion before we go there, but that was the first thought I had when I asked that question.
Okay.
Could I just ask a question first?
No, go ahead.
Okay, so Jeff Rao, um, in your report, you suggest that we wait until twenty-seventeen to, um, treat the trees, but Jeff from Arbor Systems is asking us to do it this year, is it just, is that a budget issue?
I, I, I felt it was a budget issue, that was before, when, when we wrote this memo, I was looking at it going, well, you know, we don't have anything specifically budgeted for it. Um, however, if, if we are approved with some additional borrowing for the year, that does allow us to, um, selectively treat some this year. I also thought we were kind of getting a little later in the season for treating, but, uh.
No, we're just starting, and we'll, we'll be doing it hard, hot and heavy all the way up until July, until it gets dry. When there's moisture in the ground and the leaves are mature, then the, then the, the chemical that you inject absorbs into the tree, and it gets all into the leaves. And so when the adult female emerges from one tree that's been infected, it becomes from a larva to an adult. If, if it even feeds on that leaf, it'll die before it can even lay its eggs. So that's why it's kind of like you got this window of opportunity, and this is late May, all the way through July, where these, these adults will emerge and fly to the next tree. And I, and, and I think early on, when Jeff and I had a conversation after the survey and the inventory was finished, we, I was kind of an optimist thinking, oh, it's, we, we're not hit that hard, there's not, it's not enough here. Maybe we could push it another year. But what I've seen in the last month is, is I would say, if you're going to invest in some of these trees to get them injected, I would do it this year because the earlier you get the chemical in the tree. You can offset, and some villages do, the forest does it, uh, we work with a handful of other municipalities. We, uh, we work with a cemetery up in Madison, we'll do half one year and then do half the next. So that's on rotation, so you instead of spending twenty grand each year, you're spending ten thousand this year, ten thousand next, and then it rotates every year, so you automatically have that in your budget. That's one way you can approach it. Um, but I think that what, what we're seeing now, it's, um, a lot of the trees that are not infected right now will be infected by the end of July with the E A B eggs, they'll, they'll start feeding on the tree. And it won't be too late to inject next year, but the boar will have a pretty good head start in feeding on some of the tops of these trees. So, um, then you have, you know, and then you can inject it, kill the boar, but the damage is already done, and then you'll have dead wood in the trees that you'll have to prune out. So, um, here's a, there's definitely advantage if you do it sooner than later.
Jeanne, our focus would be taking the trees of higher grade, the ones that are fours and fives in the list, as well as the ones that are larger diameter, and then evaluating the location of those. And if we feel that is something that we would like to save, um, you know, there's one out of the corner here that's actually in pretty good shape, and there's one that's really in bad shape. Obviously, we don't want to save the one, I'd love to save it outside my window, but it's not, it's dead already. So we'll have to just kind of go and selectively be choosing which ones are, are worth saving at this point.
So we wouldn't necessarily need to amend your report, you would?
Nope.
Okay.
Nope.
Who is the village forester, or who fills that role?
I do. They didn't tell me that when I entered.
He has a lot of titles.
You know, the village has never had one, and it's, it's been, uh, I've been in the village for five years, and we just got an accepted house, so we're going to be buying out on Hillcrest, and I think, um, it's something that everybody in Jeff's shoes when he came. I, I commend Jeff on taking control of this because it was always something that was just turn the blind eye to it. And, uh, I've talked to Gary about it for the last three or four years, and it's not Gary's decision. You know, it wasn't Gary's position to push for this inventory. And when Jeff came on board, it was, everything was just kind of started in the works of it. But, uh, he put a good plan together, and it is pretty proactive and also conservative at the same time. So it's, um, you can't, you know, and that's the reason why it was so important to get the inventory done, so you can lay out a budget for the future and make your decisions. And, and it's, uh, he's on the right track as far as putting the ducks in the row, so.
Are there any further questions?
I, I, I think for the record, Jeanne made a good point that maybe the motion and the second should say that if they want, the treatment should start in twenty-sixteen, because if you, if you just adopt the plan, it's, it's inconsistent with that's.
Jeff, would you please amend your motion to include that? Or would you like to amend your motion to include that?
Uh, let me catch up to Jeanne.
Yeah, so in the, in the plan, Jeff Rao is saying that treat in twenty-seventeen and biannually after. And Jeff, Mr. Jeff from Arbor Systems is saying that if we don't start treating some trees this year, we're going to lose them. So I would rather try to find some money in the budget and start treating the trees this year.
Some page, um.
Yeah, I see it.
You got it, okay.
Yeah, I'll make the amendment. Um, so, so my, so the motion is to accept the plan as presented by Jeff Rao, the Public Works Director, um, with the amendment that we will start treating in twenty-sixteen and biannually thereafter.
I think we'd be fine either way because it does say budget in twenty-seventeen, budget for borrowing, and if we are adding under borrowing.
I think it's, I think.
But we're just, we're leaving the how up to, up to.
I need the point is it doesn't get lost in the, in the record, yeah.
I don't know who's second.
It was Eric.
Eric, is that okay with you, Eric?
Yep.
Okay, any further questions on this motion?
I've got one.
Go ahead.
Um, I know Jeff from Arbor Systems, you made the comment when you were looking at the trees that are considered street trees that residents have planted, a lot of those never were pruned properly. If the village is going to start planting trees to replace the trees or taking out, are we going to have to hire somebody then on a regular basis to come through and prune these trees?
Yeah, Jeff, they're going to be bringing something forward on that.
Okay, and then not to take business away from Jeff from Arbor Systems, but if we hire somebody like that, will that person also be able to treat the trees? Or does that have to be done by a specific specialized person?
Well, what I'm saying.
No, that's a good question. Um, what a lot of times does, what a village will do, and it's a, it's a great idea, is hire somebody within to go get their applicator's license. And it's a, it's a license that the state gives, and if, if somebody's in the village is willing to take the, their role on, uh, Fitchburg took three guys and put them through the course, and they had a study for it, and I'm sure they got a pay raise doing it, but it's saving them a lot of money, you know, they, they, you know, as far as contracting it out. It's, it's something that, I'm not sure what position Jeff's, you know, crew is in to do that, or if there's time allotted for that, or you hire somebody in just to do that. Um, in fact, so that's, take care of that question, but the second question you had as far as pruning, I'm very willing to train, and we've, I've talked to Gary before, I'd be ecstatic, you know, spend a little bit of money on us and walk the guys through J.C. Park and do some pruning, proper pruning, and, and teach them. I, I mean, that's something that we don't have any problem doing. We could, you know, prune, you know, spend a day with Arbor Systems on a daily rate, bring the guys out, and teach them how to prune the trees properly if, if that facilitates, yeah, I mean, I, I'm not trying to say it doesn't do it, but I'm, I'm volun, I'm, I'm kind of suggesting it's not a bad idea. This, and we talked about this right outside about a month ago, and, uh, the guys don't know how to prune, and they're, and, which is good that they don't do it improperly. They, they might cut some stuff off, you know, the wrong way, but, uh, I think it would be a great idea to give them a crash course, especially the smaller trees. You know, some of the aerial stuff, they're not going to be able to do, they can't climb them.
Yeah, yeah, well, something to think about.
It, it, it is something that's, you raise a good point, and, uh, it's something we have considered because, um, a tree left unpruned really can get kind of messy after a while.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Especially when they're younger. J.C. Park is in dire need of pruning. That whole park has never been properly pruned, they've pruned them where they could get their mowers underneath them, and that's it. But the anterior structure, it's called a structural prune, you do it right the first time, you shouldn't have to do it for another four or five years, um, besides raising them up, so it's a good question though.
Further questions or discussion? All of us in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you, Jeff and Jeff.
You're welcome.
So the next, let's see, we are, sorry, go ahead. Or I should say, thank you, Jeff Olson. Jeff and Jeff. Jeff and Jeff show.
Thanks for coming.
Are we on to Tree City, or are we?
Yes, go right ahead to Tree City.
Because we talked a little bit about the urban wood. Um, Tree City USA, you see these, um, signs all over the place. Um, it really is just a designator, uh, kind of a concerted effort to your tree maintenance and tree priority within a municipality. Um, it really, it's, it's meeting four standards, um, and they call it four, meeting four core standards of sound urban forestry management. First being ma, maintaining a tree board or a department, which we don't currently have, but, uh, that would be something that you would establish. And that would be also something that would be established through a tree ordinance. Now, we do have a landscape ordinance, we have a street tree ordinance, um.
It's not that complicated.
No, no, it's not too complicated to be able to do something like that. Um, and then the third item is spending at least two dollars per capita on urban forestry. Um, and that's not a lot, I mean, that's twenty, that's right around maybe close to twenty thousand dollars annually. Now, that can be, if you notice on the, I think, the fourth page, there are things that, um, there's a lot, you know, we spend leaf and brush pickup, we spend that probably already, so it's not like it would be something new that we'd be spending every year. However, to be, to truly be a tree city, we should be, if we're going to put that on our signs, we should be following through with that, adding budgeted items in there. Um, and the last item is celebrating Arbor Day, which I know we already all celebrate with picnics and, and everything, family get-togethers, and, um, probably not, but, uh, everyone's going, I didn't celebrate.
Does a whole village, does a whole village have to celebrate it, or is it?
No, no, you just.
You just have to have an Arbor Day celebration and, and you have to have some.
Plant a tree.
Something plant, yes, I will be out there planting a tree annually. But I think it's, you know, the, the nice thing is, is it does, there are grant programs, and there are, there, there's shared money out there that you do become available once you are Tree City USA. Now, I don't have a lot of experience in it, it goes about to where my forestry experience goes. Um, however, uh, from what I've been told, I think that's kind of what you've been understanding is as far as.
It's, it's really a designation. I, I, I think sometimes, um, I think people think that there's a lot of money involved, but I don't believe there really is. I mean, would it help you maybe applying for a grant with the D N R? I'm sure it does, but you, you're not going to all of a sudden become a Tree City USA and be all this grant money available.
Right, right, right. But there's, there, there are communities out there that actually put it in their development standards. I know when I was consulting and I was reviewing, um, development plans, it was a, you know, a, uh, street tree every fifty feet, you know, along an entire development, so, and it had to be maintained for up to two years. So those become significant trees, and significant, of course, that means once you end up starting adding that many terrace trees, um, you are adding that money to maintain, to trim, um, you have obviously more problems with sidewalks and everything like that. I think the feeling in the past has been, Tree City USA has been something considered, but not necessarily a direction that the village wanted to pursue, but, uh, times change, and, and, you know, we will follow whatever recommendation.
It's pretty cool, I've been involved in a couple of them, um, doing presentation for the D N R. I've been with Madison, we've done some presentations to a couple of different villages, and it's a, it's a really, it's a, it's a good thing. As far as Arbor Day events go, we've been doing Arbor Day events at Anderson Park, this is our third year that we've done an Arbor Day event. We work with the kids here at Netherwood, um, we try to get the kids from Brooklyn to come in this year, but they had something set up. So we did, we did, we did an Arbor Day event with the, uh, uh, not get start, uh, fresh start kids. So we brought fifteen fresh start kids down to Anderson Park and did an Arbor Day event, and we put them, we climbed. So if it comes to Arbor Day events, I've sat on the Dean County Tree Board for fourteen years, and I headed their Arbor Day event each year. So we can facilitate anywhere from twen, fifteen kids up to two-hundred kids doing Arbor Day events, which is a really new event, so if you need help with that.
Chief, do we usually have a lot of security issues at Arbor Day parties and events?
Not that I've heard of.
Okay, good.
It kind of makes sense with the focus on the ash tree removal, that we still have a commitment to trees in general. And then these high school kids plant trees every year on birthdays, so there is a tie-in to the system.
It's like most of this, I think we probably are already meeting a lot of the criteria, most of the criteria. You know, it just needs a little cleanup, and we would more designated kind of approach towards it. Um, but, and obviously, I don't think we'd have any trouble meeting the financial commitment because we by far already meet that just with chipping brush and, and, uh, or maintenance and tree maintenance that we already do, but, uh.
What would you like to do?
You know, I think, I, I, there, there's plenty of studies, I have studies in my file that, that, in fact, there was just recently one in the legal Wisconsin municipalities on trees, and it said that on average, trees will increase the value of a home, if trees in the front yard leave us what, and it was, it was a significant percentage. And, and, um, just by adding one or two trees in the front of a home significantly improved the, the value of that property. Now, I'm not saying if we go around and plant a whole bunch of trees, we increase everyone's assessments, I'm not trying to encourage that at all, but I'm just saying I think it, it does add to a community. I think we have to, maybe I, like Jeff said, I, I do want to take a conservative approach with it a little bit, and, and I think it's something we may want to implement over time. I think with the number of trees that we're taking out of the Prairie Mount Cemetery, we're already not a lot of trees up there, we want to make sure that we're building for the future, so it doesn't look like a field in, you know, 20 years. And then J.C. Park, you know, we've got a lot, 38, 38 ash trees were coming out of there, and we want our parks to be, have lots of shade, have lots of place to go. I, if you remember, last fall, resident came with a grant from Alliant Energy, wanted for us to partner with them for a grant with Alliant Energy to put some trees outside of Prairie View Elementary, or Netherwood Knoll, excuse me, the playground out there, and those just got planted last week. Actually, I think there were, trying to remember, six trees, six or seven nice ice trees that were planted under a grant from ATC out there, and the high school kids were out there planting, and then they had the grade school kids come out and they were showing them how they were done, I think it was Jack, I mean, out here, who's the name, who's the gentleman?
Mitchell.
Huh?
Jack Mitchell.
Jack Mitchell is a gentleman who's planted a lot of trees in the village. So I think it's a good thing. I'd like to see us move that way, but I think maybe cautiously move that way.
It's a positive any way you look at it, and it really is, it's a, it's a win-win for everybody, especially J.C. Park, I just know the ash trees that are in there, they're going to be coming out that are smaller ones, so it's a.
Any comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Appreciate the report.
You bet.
The news was better, but, and staff will be budgeting, there'll be a budget item this year.
We're going to talk about it later.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Peggy, did we ever vote on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Pardon?
Yes, I closed the public hearing.
We'll move on to item five, which was going to be a discussion with John Andorst Dietz, but they have requested that we table this item to a future meeting. We'll move on to item six, Police Chief Yule has got his annual report, if you'd like to, for 2015.
2015, yeah. So when I, when I took the position, one of the things that accreditation calls for is an annual report, so since we're moving in that direction, and one hasn't been done since 2007, to my knowledge, I thought it would be important for us to do an annual report to give not only village residents an idea of what we're doing, but the board and, and other committees as well. So the staff and I put together the annual report, we thought it turned out pretty well, given the limited amount of time we had to work on it. But if there's any questions that, that you have, please feel free to ask, but I think all in all, it turned out very well.
Board, any questions for the chief?
There's a very interesting statistic on page 36, showing a downward trend in the number of calls for service, and I was just wondering if you could, what would you say about that?
Yeah, well, I, I will tell you that statistics are a matter of what you put in them, and so, you know, the calls for service are a, a combination of, of all the items that may have been done or may not have been done. I would say that on average, from what I've seen, the calls for service are right around that 10, 11,000 is pretty much where we're at right now. I did notice an error in this, we got our statistics from the city of Madison, they do all of our, our records management, and that's how we go through there, and I noticed that when they printed out this report, I didn't notice it till today unfortunately, but there's even an error with the number of calls for service because the graph down below shows you 8,241 incidents, which is basically small things that, warnings and things like that that we're involved with, or may not require a full incident report. And then 1,041,30 cases, which are the bigger things that require officers to write reports on, that number doesn't equal what's on there. I mean, it should be 9,654 calls for services instead of 9,546. So unfortunately, the information that we got, I didn't double check before we put in there, or, or my staff didn't either, and so that's, that's a little misleading, but again, I think that on average, the calls of service have been pretty much the same. Again, it just depends on what you count for a calls for service.
Any other questions? It's a very interesting report, chief. I thought it was very well done. I, I would like to commend you on all the positive changes you've made since you've been chief.
Thank you.
And I, I think the staff mostly agrees because there's a lot of smiling faces in here.
Right.
Also want to call attention to the fact that Vendi, the canine, was used 86 times.
Oh, yeah.
And that was a statistic that I never was aware of before.
Yeah, she's used quite regularly, especially from surrounding agencies, like she was just at the town of Madison, you know, when they had that homicide there for tracking purposes, so she's used quite a bit.
And I note too that it was a nice picture of former Chief Yule, Chief Dale Burke, I mean. He had quite a task when he was here, so it's nice that he got recognized in your report.
He was very appreciative, he sent me an email saying he was very touched, so.
Good, good. And again, thanks for all the positive changes. Do we need a motion to accept this?
This is a report.
Okay. Chief, anything else you'd like to say, or add?
Not, not on the annual report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item B, which is a proclamation for National Police Week 2016. I'd like to recognize National Police Week in honor of the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Oregon Police Department. Whereas some 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 16,000 injuries. Whereas, since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. This includes Officer Ryan P. Copeland of the McFarland Police Department and Trooper Trevor J. Casper from the Wisconsin State Patrol. There were 124 officers killed nationwide in 2015, which was a 4% increase from 2014, where 119 officers were killed. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants, servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington DC. Whereas 252 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including Officer Copeland and Trooper Casper. Whereas the sacrifice and service of all the officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 28th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13th, 2016. Whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 13th. Whereas, May 15th is designated as National Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that the Oregon Village Board firmly designates May 15th to 21st, 2016 as Police Week in Oregon and Wisconsin, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation.
So I'll make that motion.
Okay. And a second, please?
Second.
And.
Discussion.
Just for discussion, I'm wondering, not, I almost hate to talk about the grammatical issues in this document because it, I don't want to take away from this document, this is a really powerful and important proclamation, but I would like to see a couple of tweaks to the verbiage. In the, let me see, first, second, in the third paragraph, the last sentence, which was 4% increase from 2014, I think that word should maybe be when 119 officers were killed?
Yep.
And to go down, one, two, three, four more paragraphs, the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 13th. The way that I read that, it's telling me that National Police Week takes place this year on May 13th, but I know that what you mean is the candlelight vigil takes place on May 13th, so I might recommend either the candlelight vigil is, takes place on May 13th and is part of National Police Week, or I might recommend the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year between May 15th and May 21st, one of those two iterations.
Thank you.
And I really appreciate you bringing this forward to the board, I don't remember this being done in years past, and this is a really, really important document, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, I thought it was just important for the board to recognize National Police Week for everything that law enforcement does for our community and across the nation as well, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thanks, chief, do you have any further comments regarding National Police Week or the proclamation?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you. Could you, could you please go over the April canine stats?
We need to vote, yeah.
Oh, okay, we haven't voted yet on that. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the canine stats.
This is just a report that Officer Coleman does every month, I thought it was important to get you guys as much information as I can on what's happening in the police department. This is his activity report for the month of April, so you can see that he was deployed, you know, 10 times during the month of April for various things, for canine deployment, talks about his days with the dog, other, you know, sniffs and things that happened during that month, and then he gives kind of a breakdown on his activity report on exactly what he did with the canine and what it was used for during the month. So he does this, like I said, every month going forward, so we'll have that. I'm wel, you could, if you guys want me to share that, I can do that during the board meetings on a monthly basis, we can do it on a quarterly basis, whatever you want, but I thought it was important to give you guys an idea of what it looks like.
What's your target for use of canine relative to the cost of supporting a canine in the department?
Yeah, I don't know that you can put a target figure on it, quite honestly. You know, my goal is to, I, I think everyone's aware of to, to get our dog into the schools to do random searches, and I think, I think that's going to happen sometime this summer, I hope that's going to happen, so the more we can use them, the, the better. My target is to reduce drugs in our community, and that's what we use canine vendy for primarily.
So for me personally, I think, while I don't, while I never mind having documents in the, in the agenda, if, if I knew that you were going to be submitting the statistics for a purpose, that you're, you're trying to move in a direction, or that you're using those statistics to move in a direction, even if those statistics are just awareness, then that makes sense to me.
Yeah.
But, but if you're not, if you're not trying to utilize the dog at some level and you're using those statistics to get to that place, or if you're not looking to use this as a platform to communicate to the village as to the use of the dog, I, I probably would say less is more.
Yeah, I, I'm just using it to make awareness, to let you know that, you know, the canine vendy is being used, probably more often than more people think, so.
I'd agree with that statement, yeah. That's why I liked your, your statistic in the annual report, that's knowledge is not often put out there, so.
Sure.
So what?
Well, it cuts both ways, right? I mean, once you start raising awareness of something, then you start getting scrutiny as well, so.
Right.
Yep.
It's gonna, you know, again, either way you want to, either way you want to go, I would support it.
Okay.
So chief, do you have any, any input you'd like to make about that?
Well, I mean, I could certainly present it to you, you know, why don't we start on a quarterly basis and see if that's something that you guys want to continue on that pattern, we can.
Everyone okay with that?
I, I, I just looking at this, the, the drug rate for April was really high compared to other months in January, February, March, I mean, here we have drug sniffs of 46, and miscellaneous drug, drug sniff of 50, you know, and other months wasn't that high at all, and I think this is really important for our village. I would rather see, like, especially in May, May, another report like this, rather than skip quarterly.
See what you started?
It's okay. It's done anyway, so I can present.
Because I would really like to see this dog in the school.
Is it okay then, chief?
That's fine.
Come back with another report in me? All right. Board, any further comments on this? Thanks, chief, for two good reports.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your hard work.
The goal was three.
Yeah. Never good enough, huh? Move on to item number seven, the village attorney report, and we've got Attorney Dregney here, he's going to discuss the hotel project, and we are going to have a possible action, we're going to do this in open session tonight.
Yes.
Thank you. So we have had some discussions or communications with the hotel developer since our last meeting. The current status of those discussions is that we have proposed, and I think the developer is comfortable with a couple of adjustments relating to letter of credit. Specifically, we are now discussing an amount for the initial letter of credit of $640,000, which is the amount that the village will borrow to fund the TIF grant, and we have a structure for reductions in the amount of the letter of credit based on the creation of taxing, tax base. So as tax grace, base is created, the letter of credit can be reduced such that we, we don't really need more in terms of letter of credit than necessary to cover debt service payments once the building is completed. We all seem to be, I think, I think everyone is on the same page with respect to that particular issue. The one, there, there seems to be one final issue that we need to address. I think you all have this document at your seat, and the, we, we, one of the elements of this agreement is a guaranteed amount of tax increment, and we've been using the column on the left-hand side of this document entitled tax increments, and that is what your financial consultant has identified as the amount of tax increment needed each year to cover three different costs, one being administr, village administrative expenses, which is a relatively minor cost, you can see that column, it's about $2,500 a year kind of creeping up. The second is the debt service on the $640,000 borrowing, and the third is debt service on $180,000 borrowing to finance, to, to pay for part of the intersection improvements that are going to be necessary down there in Park Street.
I would just say public improvements in the area.
Public improvements in the area. And we seem to be at a, a point in our discussion where the question is whether the village wants to require the developer to guarantee enough TIF to cover those three items, or only the debt service on that $640,000 borrowing. I don't know, my, my sense is from the developer, he preferred to limit his obligation to just the $640,000 borrowing, but we've been working with all three categories, and I need just simple direction from the board on whether you want me to stick with all three categories, or, or simply work with the $640,000 borrowing in terms of the amount of tax increment developer has to guarantee will, will be generated by this project.
So I have a question to that point.
Yep.
If this hotel didn't go in there, would we still be borrowing the $180,000 for the improvements in that area?
We, we'd be borrowing for the intersection and the street probably 1 million something, so, I mean, oh, with the one, the 180, $180,000, Jeff, just represents that we're saying that we're, we'd be taking a percentage of the increment and as a contribution towards fixing the, the street and things like.
So say the hotel project didn't go in at all.
At some, at some point, the TIF would cover some of the cost, but most of it's going to hit the general borrowing.
Yeah. My recommendation would be, if the developer would prefer to not contribute to that $180,000 repayment, with the understanding that we would be incurring that debt regardless of this development, then my recommendation would be to take that out.
So is that true? So is that true?
Well, at some point, the street and the water main and the utilities have to be improved, including the intersection. And so, and, and actually in the TIF document, it shows that the TIF is not supposed to cover all those, those public improvements a hundred percent. So there'll be some general borrowing that will have to happen. But there will not be enough increment that will happen in that district that will be able to cover the expenses. It's, it's gonna hit the general borrowing.
And if, if you need, I'm happy to turn that into a motion for discussion. But if you're happy having the discussion without a motion, I'm fine that way too for procedure. I don't know what you prefer.
That's fine. I, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm hearing, we're all on the same page. So what I'm hearing from Mike is that the public improvement work's gonna have to be done eventually, one way or the other. The, the fact that we're doing the hotel, or if the hotel moves forward, that would just move the, the date up, perhaps?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, at some point, the street and intersection have to be improved and enhanced. Yep.
But isn't it true that we'd, if the hotel goes in, we'd time that so that the hotel main part of the construction work is done before we start those improvements, right?
The, we would, we would try to have the hotel, the heavy truck, truck traffic, build the hotel done before we start fixing Park Street.
Correct.
Right.
So if we...
So Jeff's asking a question that, forget about the hotel being there. Let's, doesn't matter if it's there or not. Is the village at some point gonna have to fix the intersection?
Well, yeah, of course.
And the street? Yes, the answer is yes.
And so the motion that you're suggesting is a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
To, I'll make a motion to remove the state trust fund loan from the TIF repayment of the hotel.
And then do you wanna handle administrative expenses separately?
Uh, maybe we ought to. Yeah.
Is there a second? No second? Motion fails for lack of a second. Would someone have a replacement motion for that?
Wouldn't it be the opposite?
No, I'd, I'd just, I'd make a motion that we base it on the six hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Really?
Yes.
So the TIF guarantee would be limited to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Isn't that essentially the same thing?
Well, except that now we're capturing the administrative expenses as well.
Yeah.
I guess we're just trying to simplify the process, aren't we?
Yeah, I'm just trying to take for the six forty number.
We had three categories. Your motion addressed one of them. This would essentially address all three and say the only thing that is being guaranteed is the debt service on the six forty.
On the hotel.
I'll second that for discussion. Board, any comments, any input?
Gets me where I was going anyway. Just gets me there at one time.
Okay, good, good.
My question is, would it, does it seem a prudent course to follow?
My only concern is that we, if the hotel project doesn't happen, we'll have a lot of heavy construction happening on the new road and a new intersection.
We still, we still don't have to borrow and redo the intersection. We, tomorrow, we can do that whenever we want.
We're gonna do that after the hotel anyway.
Right.
Well, I mean, we, we will start to engineer the area. I mean, we, we can't all of a sudden, we can't just all of a sudden build something. So we'll, it would take, right, Jeff, it will take a year to start studying the intersection. We gotta figure out if we're gonna put signals in or roundabouts. So there's a lot of work to be done. And if you ever tried to make a left turn out of that intersection, it, it is, it's challenging.
So we're talking lights? We're talking around about the lights.
Control the intersection, right.
It's a land acquisition.
Yeah.
Or right-of-way acquisition, depending on what design we put out there.
So with or without the hotel, at some point in the next whatever, we're gonna have to do something with the intersection.
Okay. Any other comments from the board, any other input? Everybody comfortable with this?
I guess I'd like to see the hotel pay for some of the work as far as that hundred and eighty thousand, but, you know.
Well, it, so, I'm not trying to argue for or against, I'll just try to explain this. It may, even if this motion you pass, if, I'm sorry, its motion is made is pass, if the, what it really impacts is what the letter of credit is.
Well, actually, just in case, what, it doesn't impact the letter of credit so much as, it could impact reductions. It impacts the guarantee obligation.
Right.
So what we're saying is, are you gonna, what level of value are you gonna guarantee? And at six forty, it's a certain level. If you tack on the one eighty, it goes up a little. If you tack on the administrative expenses, it goes up a little.
But there's, there's a chance at some point the hotel could start to cover some of the, the cost of the, the borrowing for the road. Further down the road. I mean, the whole, hopefully, hopefully we get two or three other businesses in there and we generate some increment and the TIF actually covers more of the public improvements. But I'm not, I'm not guaranteeing that, but that could happen at some point.
I guess Eric, the way I'm looking at it is the six forty is like the worst case. Like if the hotel doesn't go through, this is what we're guaranteed. But hopefully we'll get above and beyond. That's how I'm looking at it.
And I just like to stress at this time too that when we're talking about TIF amounts, this is a loan. It's not money that we're just giving to a developer. It's money that will be recouped by the end of the TIF.
And that's the purpose of the guarantee?
Yep.
Is how much do they have to guarantee that the village will be repaid?
Yes.
And we're talking about a guarantee of the six forty, which is the amount of, which will cover the grant. The other expenses are to cover village administrative expenses and the intersection work.
So part, I mean, part of the deal so that people are watching this, so, so this would, yeah, this is guarantee that, that, that part of the project, the borrowing for the hotel will not hit the general, general borrowing. So this will be coming out of the TIF or coming from him. And then he will, the developer will not get any of the money. He will handle this as like a construction loan. The money will be escrowed and the escrow agent will be releasing it. So if he gets the foundation put in, has to be authorized by a licensed architect that the foundation's built before he gets their money. He will handle this like a bank loan. So again, you're, you're right, following your point. It's a loan which eventually gets paid back by the, by the TIF district.
That's the point I wanted to make. You know, 'cause there's a lot of misinformation.
It's confusing.
Out there, you know, and it's, the TIF process is very complicated. So again, I wanted to make that clear.
Okay, any further discussion?
So the motion is just to cover the six forty, not to cover administrative expenses? Or is administrative in there also?
It's in there also.
Yep.
Actually, the motion is,
Six forty only.
Guarantee is limited to the six forty amount.
That's the motion on the floor.
Yeah, there's no requirement that the guarantee cover administrative expenses or the one eighty for the public improvements.
So the reason I answered, Eric, the way I answered him is that the administrative expenses are built into this chart.
Yeah, we'll need a new chart. And, and it will reflect only the taxable GO six forty column.
So, help me with this. My original intent was to go step by step through this, but Jeannie got to the end and worked this way, which is fine. I grab the wrong end of the shovel all the time. But when I net out the balance of eight twenty from the six forty that Jeannie proposed, right?
What am I?
When I take, when I take the six forty out of this eight twenty?
What, what, where are you getting the eight twenty?
Principal outstanding in year one, in the far right column.
I'm not even looking at that column. I'm only, I'm only looking at the, I was starting with the column on the left, tax increment.
Yeah, that's where I started too.
Yeah, orig, the original, where, where we are in our discussions now is that the developer has to guarantee tax increment each year corresponding to that column. If we take out of this the administrative expenses and the state trust fund loan, the only thing that'll be left will be that taxable GO bond column. And we'll need to generate a new schedule showing how much tax increment we need, would need to be generated each year to cover principal and interest payments on, on that borrowing. And that's what the guarantee would be tied to.
Yeah, so this principal outstanding, now we're in year one, will turn into six hundred and forty thousand when you reconfigure the schedule? That will be the principal outstanding amount all into the TIF district?
Uh, that sounds right.
Yeah.
Yep. In year one.
Okay.
Um, could you define it admin expense a little bit? And what is that?
Paying for my time, Lisa's time, Jeff's time in working in the TIF district.
Okay, and that's not...
There'll be expenses related to the handling of the project.
It's fairly common to expect the development to cover, to, to cover some of the administrative expenses associated with administering the TIF district on a year-to-year basis.
Okay.
And it, again, it may still do that. It's just that we won't have a guarantee that it'll do that.
Right, but we do have a guarantee for all monies that are gonna be committed to this project.
For all of the borrowing.
So, so the money that you're gonna be giving him, that, that's what we're gonna get the guarant, if this motion passes, that's what the guarantee will be for?
Yes. And that will secure the taxpayers' interest in this project?
I, I believe so.
Okay.
With, with the other, that's what I explained about how the money will be allocated to him. It'll be going through an escrow agent.
Right. All right. Any further questions from the board? Any further comments by staff? Okay, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. When will you be contacting the agent?
Me and Eric Lynn?
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Yep.
All right. I'll move on to item B regarding an offer to purchase for the bowling alley. Mike?
So, so that's in, that's being processed by me with Matt's help. And I've talked to the owner of the bowling alley, and we are in the process of making an offer to purchase. And I, I may bring that back to the board for further discussion in June. I wanna, I wanna talk to the, to Jack one more time, the owner of the bowling alley.
I'd like to hear that also.
Yeah, I'll, I'll probably bring it back on the sixth, so.
All right. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Item C is from the Public Works Committee meeting. It's a discussion and possible action regarding a revised contract with SafeBuild for building inspection services. Before we get started with commentary or discussion on this, I'd like to have someone entertain a motion to approve the revised contract with SafeBuild for building inspection services through the end of 2016.
So move.
Second. Thank you. Discussion. Go ahead, Board.
So I was in the Public Works meeting and, and I've kind of been tracking this for the last couple of years. And the debate about assessment, as far as I can tell, Eric, you're, you've really helped me kind of get my head around this debate. Is this sort of, it's a sort of balance between quality and cost. And at various times, I've, I've had feedback that maybe the quality wasn't there. And at various times, I've gotten feedback that maybe the cost was too high. And so it seems like we're always trying to strike that balance, which makes good sense to me because that's how I strike the balance in everything in my life, right? So my question is, with regards to this, this last iteration of the SafeBuild contract, the way that it was brought to me was this is a, this is a cost-saving adjustment in that we're gonna give SafeBuild seventy-five percent of what they assess as opposed to a hundred percent of what they assess, and that that's gonna be a more favorable financial position for the village. Then the discussion also was that by not opting to hire a village employee, there's additional savings there because SafeBuild is kind of pay-as-needs as opposed to pay full-time regardless of need. So that was also in the conversation. But the one piece that hasn't really come up is, is quality and how quality's gonna be managed. And so what I'd like to hear from Jeff and Mike is how are we gonna manage quality to make sure that what our contractors are getting is a good amount of quality for the service that's being provided and paid for by the village residents? And the reason I think that this is germane is, well, first of all, the village residents are paying for an assessment service. And second of all...
Inspection service.
Sorry, inspection service. And second of all, the, the contractors that are, that are coming into the village to do work for the village or do work in the village, I'm guessing are gauging their experience as to whether it's worth working in and for the village based on all of these, all of these various different aspects of their job. And I'm, I'm ignorant to those in comparison to Eric's. So I'd be interested in Eric's thoughts, but I would think that this would be part of it. So there's two stakeholders now present in the meeting right now that I think I'd like to hear how we're gonna manage those relationships.
Hello, Jeff.
Yeah, let's, first of all, let's just kind of go back a little bit. Obviously, we know what, kind of why we're here. And when we started with SafeBuild, it was actually independent inspections. That was last July, I believe it was, June or July. And at that time, they came in as a contract. And just to make a small minor correction is they came in and, and their contract stated that when we collect fees for building inspections, that ninety percent of that would go to the contract or this, in this situation, independent inspections or SafeBuild. And then ten percent would be retained by the village, and that covers our internal administrative costs. That was, that was kind of the rate they had to come in at because they weren't really knowing what they were coming into and, and how much, you know, how good things were or how bad things were. Who knows what, they did not know that. So in our discussions with them is, we've come around to a negotiated amount of a seventy-five, twenty-five split. And that's, you know, allowing the village to retain more for administration and, which we have spent considerable time with some of the billing issues and, and some other issues. So I think it's, it's a more fair and equitable split. As far as are we monitoring the performance of this contract? And I would say very closely. So much as, and, and I will also say that SafeBuild has been very responsive to our concerns when we, when we brought them up. There's been a few things that I, I wanna, I call them bumps in the road. Some of them are a little bumpier than others I would like to admit to. But they, they are situations where I always, I just wanna say it's not necessarily what happens, but how you react to the situation where, which really is, makes me concerned. SafeBuild's been very good about responding to situations when we've had problems. And I think some things have gone well. I think our, their ability to be able to track inspections, their be able to be, their ability to be able to schedule inspections and, and be able to have that information at the fingertips has been very good. I think it's been a learning curve with our, with our contractors within the village because once you get used to a system that you've used for a while, and we had a in-house building inspector for quite a while, and there were, you, you kind of get used to working with that person and there's a trust that happens, it takes a while to develop that. And I think we've seen that in the last year, you know, and, and continuing to develop that. I will say that we are checking, continually checking up on, on this, on the system, so to speak. I also follow through immediately with any kind of concerns that we have, whether it's from a contractor that gives me a call. I will follow up to find out, is this a legitimate complaint or not? There are some situations where I receive a complaint call of a, of a billing permit not being issued, find out it was dropped off at nine o'clock that morning. And so, you know, I, I have to kind of weigh things and say, well, you know, we, we do offer a system. It doesn't mean you're going to get your permit immediately as soon as you drop it off at the front door. So we are, you know, we've been in quite a few meetings, Mike. I think you would say we've been in quite a few meetings with them, their upper staff as well, because they're monitoring the situation as well. What we did is ask them to, you know, looking at this going forward, whether or not we are going to extend the contract. We told them we, we needed some new terms. And, and of course, since the old contract was written with independent inspections, they wanted to update it to their standard contract, which I don't disagree with at all. So what we have here is a contract through the end of the, the year end of December. So we, we, we didn't want it running, I think it was running in eight May. I think it was a May through, and it was really hard because, you know, May's a very, very busy time for us. We said, let's run this to the end of this year. As long as everything's going well and no one has any problems, it'll automatically renew for a, a two-year period. And that's in the, it's in the contract. I think there is a lot of value in continuity. We have the ability, if we're not getting the service, we have the ability to either amend the contract or cancel the contract. So, um, that's kind of, I don't know if that's totally answered everything you wanted, you wanted to hear, but um, we are paying very close attention to it. There's been some bumps in the road, and um, uh, most notably, and most recently, some with commercial, um, building permits, which are being handled by the state, there's been some confusion in that. Um, we are not wanting to go down that road with SafeBuild. They do offer that for some services, and we are not ready for that, and we've told them that. But, uh, and there's some, there's been, there's been a bump in the road on that, so.
I'll throw a couple of comments in too.
Sure.
Um, I've heard from contractors that it's been a learning curve for them too, because there used to be, um, I could do this before. I heard that a lot, you know, the old inspector would let me get by with this. I didn't have to get, you know, all this stuff done right away because I knew I had a relationship with the old inspector, and, and it's not that way anymore. It's like, you know, I said, no, you gotta get up to speed and do what, you know, what you're supposed to be doing now, on time, and not put things off weeks. Um, I've also heard from, you know, quite a few people, um, as far as, uh, staff upstairs, that says that, yes, things are a lot better. Things are getting done timely, things are being notified. There's a few, um, hiccups yet as far as, uh, notifications is when things get done by the inspector, and not letting other people know, but they're working on it, and things are moving in the right direction, and everything sounds real positive, so. One question I do have though, but this, this is, this came from Public Works Committee, but then our last meeting, didn't we say that we were gonna hold off on this, and?
No, that was-
I don't remember going through the whole contract at the last meeting. I thought we just waited a little bit.
It actually, it actually came out of the March.
Okay.
And, and what happened was, it came out of the March meeting, and then Jeff and I had, it was Jeff and I had another meeting with SafeBuild to still work on some details, so it actually came as a recommendation out of-
Right, but I didn't feel we were ready to make the recommendation yet. I thought, I just kinda thought we were gonna hear back after your other meeting, so.
We, we could, we could hold it for another meeting.
No, it's fine, let's get it done, we'll get it going, but I was-
And, and we had, we, I sent them a contract, um, last week and said, this is what, you know, with the direction we've been given by the committees and the boards, and, and, and they said, we will accept, accept those.
I think one other important thing to make aware of too, is that we're getting, what, another half a day? Or a full day of them to actually physically be here to talk?
Yeah, well, actually, yeah, they've, they've moved their hours up, um, at least in-house hours, where it's dedicated in-house hours three times a week now.
Okay.
And, um, and that's been, I think, very helpful. We were on kind of a two-day, a week, Monday, Wednesday, and we felt that that left too much of a gap Thursday, Friday, especially if someone's dropping something off and, and everything, but I think that's been very helpful. And, you know, Ben, our, our building, our main building inspector, has actually been in quite a, office quite a bit. Nice thing to remember with, with someone like SafeBuild, or any kind of consultant you have outside, if we, if we were to have just an internal person, that's one person. So, when they're gone on vacation, when they're sick, when they have a family emergency or something like that, and they have to be gone for three or four days, things grind to a halt because we do not have the backup type of staff for those situations. Whereas SafeBuild, in this situation, they, they've said, you know, listen, if it gets to the point where you need three people on the ground, we're providing that. Or if Ben is taking normal vacation or something, there are people who are trained in our community who can step right in and would take that role for that type period. So, our goal is for continuity, um, as with any new service or anything, there's always a learning curve with it.
So, I've got two questions for you, and I'm gonna ask them back to back as they're connected. Um, the first question is, what tools do you have to smooth out the bumps? And the second question is, what tools would you like to smooth out the bumps? Because you're right, bumps do happen when you're integrating a new system.
Yeah. Well, the tools I do have, and the tools I do use, is I, actually, we've been very close communication with, um, two individuals who are up a level, um, DA Maddox and, and, um, Chris, Chris Bushky, both who are monitoring our contract here and everything, and they've been very, very responsive. In fact, you're able to get them on the phone very easily and readily for that.
And that's, that's you?
That's me.
That gets my phone?
Yes, yep, exactly. Um, on the other, and, and Ben communicates back with his office, uh, very often. The other tool that we've requested, um, that they're gonna start providing us on a weekly basis is actually a report of, um, contract, or of building inspections that have closed out. Because I think where we noticed there was a gap, was our staff was not really realizing that, oh, that, that building permit, final inspection, we got a certificate of occupancy. There's certain things that our staff needs to do to be able to follow up with that, with the, the water meters and, and billing and everything like that. So, we'll be getting that report on a weekly basis now from SafeBuild for that. And we just had the first one come through last week. So, those are things that we'll continue. They've been very, very good about wanting to work with us if we need something, you know, different, or if we need, um, additional information. I know the billing at first was, uh, Candy did a lot of work with billing because there was just some confusion at first, and that's really straightened out and smoothed out considerably since, so.
So, if a contractor had concern, what would your, what would your recommendation be, since maybe they're watching today?
Uh, well, for one thing, I want them to come direct, directly to me and talk to me about the concern, and what is it? On every instance, I've, I've gone back, um, either to, first, my, my priority is always to go back. If someone comes to me with a concern about a specific person, I wanna go and talk to that person very first, because I, you know, that's, I think, important. And then if I don't feel that it's resolved, or if I feel it's serious enough, then I take that up to the next level. But, you know, I, I know plenty of contractors in town, I've also spoken with a lot of them, and they've called me. I've had utilities call me and discuss things, and, uh, it's just kinda the way we get normal communication back. Meet with people in my office on, on regular basis, um, and so those are, um, that's kinda how, how it works on a DA DA basis.
Uh, have we considered, uh, creating a fact sheet? Or have we created a fact sheet for contractors to, to explain, you know, frequently asked questions? Well, we have changed our inspector, these are some frequently asked questions.
We, one, one of the things that SafeBuild has offered is to have an annual meeting where all, we would invite the, uh, anyone that does building in the community to come and listen to a presentation. And I don't, maybe part of that would be something like that, as a handout.
Is that, have you been to those, Eric, or is that something that-
They have not had one yet.
We're saying we're gonna do that, Jeff, I'm sorry if I missed.
I didn't know if that was something that was normal and customary in other communities, or if that would be kind of an innovative thing?
I don't know if it's innovative, but I think it was a good idea that they suggested.
Yeah.
Any further comments? Okay, um, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the, on the floor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks for you.
We'll move on to item D, which are the motions from the May 5th Planning Commission meeting. And turn it over to trustee Carpenter.
Sure, so my first, uh, motion is that we approve Resolution Number sixteen dash eleven, which is conditionally approving an amended final plat for the Oregon Parks Neighborhood. And this first addition is contingent upon meeting the village engineer's recommendations in the memo in our packet dated May second, twenty sixteen.
Second.
So, if you, if you looked at the memo, you saw that the Rupert and Rooker and Moki had some things for them to just tweak and change, and so the Planning Commission, uh, wanted to approve this and recommend it to the village board.
Any further discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, the second one, um, is just a review of the redlined version of the final agreement, uh, for that Oregon Parks Neighborhood addition. And this is a note that the developer will sign the agreement.
So, I, I put them together, Jeannie, because the, the board wanted to see this agreement, and if, I put in a master report because there's any questions about the, the final redline agreement. It took a while to get it back here.
Yeah, the, uh, the board has actually already voted to approve the agreement with the rec- understanding that there were still some s- small changes that were being addressed, and I think, uh, um, one of the trustees said, please bring it back when it's done, and-
I think that one-
Yeah, I reviewed it, and I'm satisfied with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeannie?
Is, I'm still me?
Nope.
Okay, good. I don't know anything about this.
I'll move on to item L.
About liquor.
Uh, discussion of Act two eighty-six. Would you like to take this one, Mike?
Sure. This came from the league, there's two things that are impacting us. One would require some action by the board at some point, having to do with, right now, we currently have a, an economic development grant of ten thousand dollars, and we have a reserve license, we give, we give a license to somebody, they pay us ten thousand dollars, and they, um, we typically have now, we turn that ten thousand back to them as, as a grant, the state said you can't do that anymore. So, we're gonna have to remove that from our liquor license orders.
Is there anyone clear on that?
And, and the second thing has to do with a sales tax exemption for materials sold to contractors, which will, uh, impact us in the future. But the first one's gonna require, uh, Matt was saying that, that the motion tonight would be to direct village staff to remove the ten thousand dollar economic grant from the village's alcohol beverage ordinance, and we'll bring that back for, for action then.
Could I, I'd entertain that motion, please?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we remove that ten thousand dollars from the village's alcohol beverage ordinance.
A second, please?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that? Does everyone understand what's happening here? Any comments from staff?
Nope, we'll, we'll bring the ordinance back.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, move on to item G, approving the Second Amendment to Real Estate Agreement with Lutheran Church Extension Missouri Synod.
We think we're finally done with the agreement, right, Matt?
Let's hope so.
Let's hope so.
Yeah, this is again, to purchase a, a little bit of land for a, a new well site.
Through, through water impact fees.
Through water impact fees.
Right.
Yeah, we had to make a, do a little more work on the agreement because, uh, the current owner advised us, uh, late in the process that they're leasing the land for agricultural uses, and we needed to build some language into the agreement to address the lease. We think we've got what we need now. They've approved it.
Yes.
And so, once you approve it, we will, uh, have it signed, and, um, then we'll move forward with the process. We've got some work to do before we can close. We've gotta annex it, create a certified survey map, creating the parcel we're buying. Once that's done, then we can close.
So, given the, um, the overview that we got from the auditor at the beginning of the meeting, do we have one-to-one coverage for the water impact fees and the purchase price of the land?
I, I'm gonna, I'm bringing it to top, have to talk to auditor about what he said, because I think he was talking more about putting the, putting the, the well in. We, we definitely have enough money to buy the, the property.
But, but not necessarily enough to buy the property and put in the well?
Well, again, I'll have to get that clarified, because there's gonna be, we're gonna sort of do this in steps. We're, we, we definitely have enough money to buy the property.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, I mean, then, I think we need to ask him, because we may do the well sort of in segments, so to speak, so we'll have to talk to him about that.
All right.
Yeah, that was, that was a good point you made, I was aware of that. I'll, I'll explain it to you.
I have one question, and where, I'm sorry, I, I should know, where is this located?
You go up, uh, north Bergamont Boulevard?
Yeah.
Where you go past the church and you make a left where the street dead ends. The, the Bergamont Boulevard turns to the west and sort of de- it dead ends there.
Right.
It's sort of in that, in that general area.
But this is the Lutheran Missouri-
Yeah, so they, so the, so the Lutheran Church, uh, from out, out, out of the state owns that seventy-five acres between CC and Nether Woods. We're buying a one point-
Seven.
Seven, four acres from them, seven and nine, yeah. It's not, it's not the current, it's not the Lutheran Church in Oregon.
No, no, I, I know it's outside of town, yeah, okay, and it's gonna be annexed in, right?
At, at some point, we have to annex it in and create a CSM, yep.
Okay, is that the same road as the Presbyterian Church?
Yes, yes, yep.
Okay, that's, that's what I thought, but I-
Yep, yeah, I just tried to, it, sort of, by the way, explain it, since I were dead ends. If, if you look to the west, there's sort of, that's the general area where the property would be.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Any further questions on that? Peggy, is there a motion on the floor?
No.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the Second Amendment to Real Estate Agreement with Lutheran Church Extension Fund dash Missouri Synod for the purchase of one point seven nine four acres for a new well site in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand dollars, one hundred and seven thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to items eight and nine, and the reason we're gonna take these both at once is we don't-
We don't, we don't need them.
There's no action necessary in these, because we didn't go into closed session.
Nope.
We have no public appearances. We have, uh, item eleven is approval of minutes. We have minutes from August seventeenth, November second, and November sixteenth. I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So move.
And a second, please.
Second.
Do we have any additions?
Who's second in, I'm sorry, we didn't finish that.
Eric, any additions or corrections?
Eric.
Yeah, all three of you.
Oh, sorry, I thought that was your question.
Okay, um, we have no further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to item twelve, approval of vouchers. It looks like Lisa's ready for this with a lot of foot of bills there. Does anyone have any questions?
Well, I'll make a motion to approve vouchers. To do that, I gotta catch up and get the dollar amount.
Okay.
The amount of two hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and twenty-four cents.
A second, please.
Second.
Now, we're ready for discussion. Any questions on the vouchers? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Actually, we gotta do a roll call vote on this.
Yeah.
Red Power?
Yes.
Grunier?
Upstee.
Cool?
Yes.
Mudo?
Yes.
Bolick?
Yes.
Carpenter?
Yes.
Okay, are we all set, Peggy?
Yes.
Okay, uh, the vouchers are approved. Does anyone here have some community input? We're on item thirteen. Dan, you don't have any input for us tonight?
I don't.
Thanks, thanks for being here anyway. Yeah. Uh, move on to item fourteen, proclamations and announcements. Are there any board comments? Uh, staff comments? Jeff, you're gonna update us on the status of the historic Tin Man?
Yes, um, project advertised last Thursday, and it also advertised, will advertise again this, uh, the nineteenth. Um, bid openings will be two thirty PM on June first. And as with normal projects, usually it's that last week, right before the bid opens, and we start getting more of the phone calls and stuff, but, uh, most of those will be handled by our engineer, and we're just, uh, hoping for some good, um, bids from that. We did, we are giving them the option of whether it be painted this fall or next spring, depending on, there's a lot of work out there, and so we wanna make sure that we're getting the best bid that'll give them the timeframe that they need to be able to get in and, and do this.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, Jeff? I, I'd like to thank Randy Glisch, uh, for all his work on that project also.
Absolutely.
It's been a, I think, a lot bigger project than he ever dreamed when he stepped forward to, what did he do with it? He wanted to plant some stuff? He offered to-
Around the pump house.
Around the pump house, and-
He, he's learned a good lesson.
And now we're-
Going volunteer.
And now we're, we're painting and lighting, and, and, uh, he, he's done a wonderful job, and I wanna thank him publicly. Item two, upcoming meetings, Mike.
So, we have board review next Monday, and then on June sixth, Mike Slavny will be here to talk about the sign code, and then Candy, he said that we'll have the annual renewal of the alcohol licenses on the agenda.
Great. Don't wanna miss the board review.
How, how many times do we do the board review?
Once a year. Yep.
I feel like I'm asking the same question twice, but what happens in the board review?
You're asking that question?
Yeah, yeah. So, we haven't had one already?
I think it's actually the third time.
The, the open book is where they can come and talk to the auditor, or, I mean-
Board review though is where they wanna challenge that decision that the assessor made.
Yeah, like formally, or challenged.
And so, we actually like skipped a week or two since the last time I asked, and this is the eighth, that's how it is.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, and then, you know, they-
I think we should put Jeff in the board review, so he knows what's on-
I don't even know what-
That's always a suggestion, somebody.
You know, I think, next term, I think that's what should happen.
Yeah, someone make a note, please.
Yeah, one more time, yeah.
Mike's already reminding me of all the committees on my- Yeah, Jeff, it's right here, here for minutes. Put you on the committee.
That's okay. Um, item fifteen. Um, communications and miscellaneous business. Mike, could you please update us on the twenty sixteen borrowing?
So, um, Lisa and I have been updating this list, and I just wanted to bring two things to your attention. Uh, it goes back to what, uh, Jeff was talking about, the, the trees. We did add fifty thousand dollars to start doing the removal, excuse me, treatment and planting of new trees. And then, um, Lisa and I have been talking about that, we actually have a pretty, pretty, um, comfortable fu- fund balance in fund, uh, four oh five, which is the street improvement. So, we decided to, um, suggest to the board that we borrow another fifty thousand dollars and take fifty thousand dollars out of the fund balance to- to just have another $100,000 to do, policy another mill and overlay street this year or maybe do more chip slinging or something like that. I mean, that's all going to come back to the board at some point. But we're thinking that we may want to do another street this year. And so, Jeff, is Jeff and Gary are sort of looking at what's called the Pacer Program, which goes out and rates the streets and then we'll come back and be talking to the board about them.
So, you don't have a street in mind yet?
No, not yet. Not at this point. And the reason why I decided to do that, we decided to do it is that, if you recall in 2017, at this point, we're proposing to borrow $500,000 to do street improvements and I thought, well, let's maybe try to even do a little bit more this year to get even ahead of the program a little bit, so.
And if it sounds like we're borrowing a lot of money, I just want to remind you, as staff has told me or informed me, we've got borrowing tailing off from previous years.
We do and, but as Jim, when Jim Matt was here, I mean, we have this, but you know, we also have the borrowing for the buildings. And so, the board has hired elders to do the update to the five-year financial plan. And you know, that all will be, will be discussed probably sometime in late summer, early fall, something like that.
But my point is this borrowing that we, you know, we talked about TIF funding and, and road borrowing and things like that. We, we try and keep our, our debt consistent.
Right.
And we've got debt falling off.
Right, in 2018, 2019?
19.
It's a big thing, yeah.
Yeah, so we're going to, you know, just to keep the debt service consistent, we're, we're going to do more roads, which is always a good thing.
Always a popular option, yes. And needed.
Much, much, much so, yeah.
So, that's just an update for the board too.
Thank you. Any questions on Mike's update? We'll move on to the item B, the Fire EMS District Report. Any questions on that? Any comments on that?
Well, I just wanted to continue to thank Chief Delarc for the work he's doing on that. It's great to see that come forward to the board. I get to look at it every month on the Fire EMS Commission, one of the many commissions I'm on.
No, it's, this is great information. Much appreciated.
That's not going to help Jeff.
Yeah. You're pretty safe for a couple of years. Where I lost my place, where was I Peggy?
You're on C.
I'm on C. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the Director of Public Works to send a letter to Dane County requesting a write-off as a result of creating residential lot at 5207 Lincoln Road in the town of Oregon.
So move.
Please have a second?
Second.
Discussion, please.
This typically would have gone through planning, but we, we just missed the timing and-
Right.
The board, it's something we always do with these-
This is before Dane County zoning last meeting.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
And it was postponed because we didn't have the action from the village. But I expect Mr. Ganser's application will be in front of the next meeting. Thanks, Mike.
Glad you did vote.
Oh. Yes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, I'll take care of that.
Thank you Jeff. Item D, I'd like to commend Director of Public Works Jeff Rau. He was just voted beyond the Herowinds Group's Executive Committee. Congratulations Jeff.
Yes, I won my own election this year.
Yeah.
Was it hard fought?
Huh?
Was it hard fought?
It was, I was out of four, so I, I felt pretty good about that. I, yeah, but no, actually, it's good. They asked, they asked a couple of us if we would at least consider being on that committee and, and it's good, I think, because we are a significant player in this continued effort. And financially, we have a lot at stake and so I think it's good that we, we keep our tabs on this pretty closely.
This morning Jeff and I went to the press conference on this and so there'll be some press coverage on, on the, you know, introduction of the program. And then, there was actually a good article in the State Journal on the front page yesterday and talking about it as well, so.
They didn't interview us.
Nope.
Can you believe that?
No. Well, maybe next time Jeff. Move on to item E, since this is not an action item. It's a, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve Resolution 16-14, waiving the bidding requirements for the procurement of a sewer jetter slash vacuum truck. Jeff, would you like to handle this?
Do you have to entertain a motion first or do you?
I just did.
I'll second for discussion.
No, I entertained the motion.
Sorry, I will make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Alright. Just briefly, you know, the village does have Policy Number 304 for procurement and part of that is anything over, I believe, that's $10,000, it would require a sealed bid, a private sealed bid. And for this piece of equipment, we're actually asking that that be suspended mainly because we've, we've actually just finished the onsite demonstration of five separate units from five separate vendors over about the last month, month and a half. Each one of those vendors has brought out their equipment, spent an entire morning with us and our staff and kind of demonstrated the equipment, shown it operating as a, told as an excavation device as well as a cleaning and a jetting device, taking them out into the village and, and worked with them. And our plan to do that was to really make sure that the equipment that we're purchasing, this is a very expensive piece of equipment, that the piece of equipment we're purchasing is something that, that we and our staff are going to be very, very happy with. We've actually, we would prefer, there were two vendors we felt that really stood up above and beyond the other three. And so, we are, what we're asking for is permission to go to those two vendors with our specification and seek quotes and then allow negotiation of that to a point where we can then bring a recommendation back to the village board.
Any questions for Jeff? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And I would like to mention before I left the room, I actually knew what that agenda item was going to discuss because I read through the material that you provided, so when I voted, I actually knew what I was voting for even though I wasn't here when the motion was made.
Okay. Thanks Jeff and Jeff.
Lots of Jeffs here today.
Physically, yes.
Go ahead and sort that out in a minute.
Peggy's got it.
I mean Darlene.
I don't know if it was-
Darlene taking shots, I mean, I see what you guys started over there.
She's usually the quiet one. I'm enjoying this. I'm going to sit here quietly for a while, but it is getting late, so I'll move on to the reports of committees. First committee is Finance, Building and Facilities and I'll take these motions. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 16-13 Designated Officials Authorized to Declare Official Intent Under Reimbursement Bond Regulations.
Second.
Lisa, would you explain what I just, the motion I just made, please?
I know, I didn't-
I could do that. So, as we discussed at the Finance meeting, this will not make the staff and then the board approve these individual reimbursement resolutions. This will allow us to just do it as a general resolution. And I want to note that, I don't know if you noticed, but I put in the, in the resolution that only the village president and the vice president of the board will be able to fill out this what's called a Declaration of Official Intent. So, Lisa and I could not do that.
Okay.
And so, so we, you know, that's just safekeeping going forward.
Any questions?
And so, this allows us to reimburse ourselves with the money we're going to borrow, that's my point, sorry. I forgot to make that at the beginning of the explanation.
Anyone clear on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number two, I'd like to make a motion to increase crime coverage insurance from $100,000 to $500,000.
Second.
This is a, I guess, precautionary measure. This is, when you say crime coverage, I assume that we're talking investment.
We gave the example of the former Black Earth Clerk who was sentenced for stealing $400,000.
Yep, and this will increase our premium by $1,239.
For an extra $400,000 of coverage, basically.
For an extra $400,000.
Of crime coverage, right.
Yep. Any further questions or discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare RFP for banking services and have the Finance Committee approve the RFP prior to sending it to banks.
Second.
That's pretty straightforward. Lisa, you have any commentary on that?
No, not right at this moment.
Alright, so this again is for banking services. I, I assume it's going to be as many local institutions as possible?
I think that's the, yeah, the intent of it is to target the local banks.
Alright. Further questions? Is it a general RFP, is not something specific that you need an RFP for? Is it just a general document?
I guess I don't understand your question.
I'm trying to understand the motion.
We, we have to prepare Doug, a request for proposal that's pretty detailed on what a bank that will be selected will do as far as providing services to us.
And what costs there are.
The cost, and for example, we'll make sure that we do not go backwards on the technology that Chase is currently providing us as an example. So, that'll, that'll be in the RFP, the bank, the banks will have to demonstrate that to us as an example.
Alright. Good question Doug. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to direct staff to prepare an RFP for auditing services and send an RFP to auditing firms including the village's current auditor.
Second.
We're happy with our current auditing firm, but it's customary to go out for bids, how often? Every three?
At least five.
Three or five years?
Probably around five years.
Yeah, it, it prevents auditing firm staff from getting too close to the village staff. So, it just keeps the, the audit honest, so to speak. And I don't mean that it's, could be dishonest, I mean that if you get too familiar, sometimes you overlook things you shouldn't. Further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to make a motion to amend the sick leave conversion plan to allow Mark Bealow's family to receive the balance of the funds remaining in his account in the event something happens to him prior to January 1st, 2017 and to pay out Mark's account balance to him after 1/1/17.
Second.
Any further discussion on that item? Mike, do you have anything to add?
Nope, that's sort of silver.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item six, I'd like to make a motion to approve Staley's repairs at the Village Hall in the amount of $2,908 and at, and at the police building in the amount of $4,788.
Second.
Jeff, do you want to do a little overview on this?
Just do a little bit, you know, we do, we do annual boiler inspections. Staley, Staley has a contract with, to come in and do annual inspections as well as just annual maintenance. One of the things, there was some leaky steam piping and everything that needed to be addressed at the Village Hall. That amount is for $2,908. It's our recommendation, our recommendation that that would be approved. The police department, they were having trouble with, with getting supply actually to certain items over there on the boiler and they ended up physically cutting through a three-quarter inch line because they couldn't figure out why they weren't getting any water and it was completely chock full of buildup. So, with scale and rust. So, what they found out is that the water softener has not been operating. This was discussed during committee of, well, why is this, why wasn't that determined? You should be able to know if the water softener is operating or not and that was an oversight that just was never picked up. But what the plan is here to be able to replace water softener with one that's sized appropriately for the building as well as be able to replace the piping that's visible in there. Like I said in the, in the, at that time during the Finance Committee meeting was, there's always the fear is the unknown as far as what you don't see. I did talk to Staley about this and he said, well, let's take it from here and at least repair what we can and hopefully that will take care of things. And that amount is $4,788.
Thank you, any further questions from the board? I believe it was also discussed in doing a little bit more preventive maintenance going forward.
Correct.
You know, in the case of a water softener, making sure that this, if the salt's not going away, you-
Correct.
Find out why, so.
Correct, why are we buying salt, yes.
Yeah, why aren't we buying salt? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'd like to make a motion to approve the write-off of personal property taxes for Madison Plumbing in the amount of $211.99 and Main Street Studio in the amount of $218.23.
Second.
Personal property taxes are assessed on business assets and these two businesses not only did not pay, but they, they are now no longer in the village and we can't locate them. Is that correct?
Well, we think we've located one of them and I actually emailed him today with his personal property tax bill. So, I'm hoping to collect on one of them.
Okay.
But one of them is no longer in business.
Right, the Madison Plumbing is no longer in business.
Correct.
Okay, alright, so if, assuming that that former business owner of Oregon does pay this and we've written it off, we just re-recorded it as revenue then or?
We just wouldn't write it off.
Just wouldn't write it off?
Yeah, we just won't write it off.
Okay, alright.
But if you do write off a loss, it's a general accounting practice to, to bring it back in as a miscellaneous credit.
Yep.
And the two will wash in the bottom line.
Very good, yep.
At least in private practice, that's normal.
Thank you.
At some point, you have to write off bad debt, you can't carry it forever, is what I'm trying to say.
Right, correct.
Thanks Jeff.
And then what happens with that too is there's a report that I file and we will get the other portion back from the other taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. Any further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're on to item B, Public Works and Utility Committee Meeting. I'm turning, turn those over to trustee Poole. Alright, items one, two, and three will be available at the June 6th board meeting, so we won't discuss those tonight. Move on to item four, because I'd like to make a recommendation or make a motion to the village board to approve the purchase of a Volvo L90H front-end loader, plow package and winter tire package in the amount of $182,165 from airing Equipment Company of DeForest.
Second.
The guys at the Public Works Group looked at quite a few of these and this is the one that best fits their need and this is what they'd like to purchase. It is a budgeted item.
Correct.
That's all I've got.
It's a very nice piece of equipment. We're getting a great trade-in on what we have. Volvo's given us a great trade-in on that. I did actually speak to someone in Verona this last week and mentioned that we were putting this before the board and he had glowing recommendations for a Volvo loader, so.
A lot of money to that.
Gary and the guys have done a lot of research on this as well. I commend him for his lot of work he's put in on this.
Since Jerry's not here, I guess I'll say all in favor?
You can just do it.
Okay.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Step right up, second vice president.
We'll go on to item five, I'd like to make a motion to purchase from Bobcat of Madison for a Bobcat E50 T4 long arm mini excavator in the amount of $60,000.
Second.
This and a few other items, this is to actually go on this other piece of equipment, correct?
Well, this is, this is for the loader and trailer, or not, sorry, this is for the mini excavator and trailer only.
Okay.
For the $60,000.
Oh, gotcha, yes, yeah.
Yep, yeah.
Nevermind.
And this is part split between equipment budget and $50,000 under our water budget. Bobcat has consistently given us great pricing. I don't know if you notice on their, on their quote, we get a, you know, very, very sizable discount. It's a, you know, quoted as a $90,000 piece of equipment. We're getting it essentially for $60,000. We get a very good price on this. They've been very supportive and responsive and it's a good piece of equipment. Actually, can't wait to get this because there are several, several things that we've had in the last couple of weeks where we keep saying that if only we had that excavator, we could be using it for this at this point, so. Actually, can't wait to get this because there are several, several things that we've had in the last couple of weeks where we keep saying, now, if only we had that, um, excavator, we could be using it for this at this point, so.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Um, item six, like to make a motion to approve the purchase from Bobcat of Madison of a nail point, um, in the amount of six thousand eighty dollars and ten cents.
So move. I'm sorry, second, you took, you made the motion.
Uh, this is a, a device to go on, uh, above-mentioned tool, or Bobcat for breaking concrete and, uh, frost, ground, that kind of thing. Just another piece of equipment they need to go along with the purchased above. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item seven is also a motion to approve purchase from Bobcat of Madison, a SGX sixty stump grinder in the amount of five thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy cents.
Second.
Uh, this also goes on the above-mentioned equipment.
Actually, this goes on the Bobcat, actually, not the, uh, not the...
Okay. Not the long-arm loader?
Yep.
Excavator?
No, and this is something we're, this is something we're asking for, uh, for a couple of reasons. Number one is we were able to obviously come in under where we were budgeted for the, um, excavator, however, or for the, uh, loader. However, something that we have as a result of all these trees that we're cutting down is we have an abundance of stumps that are appearing within the village. Um, we can either pay someone, uh, say like our systems, come in and do that and I can cut, uh, several hundred dollars per stump. Whereas, and if you can see in the memo, the rentals, it's very easy to actually, to pay one of these off fairly quickly, so, um, that's our goal. You go up to cemetery, you can find stumps that have been up there for ten, fifteen years and have not been dealt with yet.
What diameter stump will be, that handle?
Uh, it's, it's really, it's just, it's like any else. It will, um, I talked to Jeff Olson about this the other day and, and I mean, we should be able to handle just about anything we have.
Oh, really?
It really, it's a, it's a high, it's a high-capacity, um, stump grinder. It's not a fifty thousand dollar Vermeer, you know, professional-grade stump grinder that's going to be used every single day for years on end, uh, but this will, uh, more than meet our needs, for...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Move on to, uh, Planning Commission, May fifth, uh, trust, now trustee Carpenter, please present these motions.
Sure, so, um, the first motion I'll make is that we approve the certified survey map on Park Street and Rosewood Avenue, creating lots one, two, and three contingent upon meeting the recommendation from our village engineering engineers memo dated April twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
So if you, there's a, a document in our, in our packets, you notice that the, this is basically making those lots a little bit more, um...
Usable.
Normal shapes. Yes, regular shapes. They were pretty irregular lot lines before. And the, the owner would like to do this, obviously, because they will be easier to sell.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And the second one is, um, I'd make a motion that we approve the amended, uh, specific implementation plan for Beehive Project contingent upon meeting the recommendations from our village planner memo dated April twenty-eighth, twenty sixteen.
Second.
And this is primarily the, the Beehive folks have decided to, uh, make their first building that they're gonna be doing, uh, focusing on memory care. So they will have to be building a fence and a few other changes, um, and so that went through the Planning Commission and the Planning Commission recommended that for approval.
Jean, can you ask, can you answer, can you explain what a metal picket fence would look like?
It's very, it's attractive. They show us a picture, it's attractive, so it's like a, like a black, um, like, like, if you drive past like Edgewood College, something like that. Basically something that looks attractive, but doesn't let people wander away and into the street. They could probably climb it if they wanted to, but hopefully someone is watching and we'll get to them before that happens. Yeah.
It's not like the, the one that's down here around the, uh, uh, down here on Jefferson, it's around the, the, uh...
No, I think, it, it's opaque. No, it's not opaque. You can still see through it.
Oh, you can still see through it?
Yeah.
They have the covered, you know, things on there, okay.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Move on to item seventeen, there, uh, we've got minutes not requiring action from the, uh, Fire EMS, uh, and the public library. Item eighteen, we have no unfinished business. Item nineteen, uh, we don't, we have new business, but we don't have any approvals of operator or operator renewals, licenses. Item twenty, uh, please review your future agenda items. And item twenty-one, I have a motion to adjourn, please.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
So, uh...